Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We'll call a meeting to... Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Denise? Please?
I don't have any at this time, David. I really, I couldn't open the agenda. It's not in a PDF this time. So I can't make any adjustments because I'm not quite sure what's on the agenda. But if Darlene can, when she sends the agenda out or posts it, please post it as a PDF.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you want us, do you want me to read down through the agenda?
Yes, if you don't mind, and I can just quickly write it down.
All right. There are adjustments missed from prior meetings, public comment, budget review with the budget committee, boards and officials, Taylor Hill, town meeting warning, warrant and mails, roads, executive session if needed, and further business in the term.
Okay, thank you. I don't have anything to adjust it with.
Jim?
Nope, I don't have anything.
All right. Minutes from the prior meeting.
One thing I have to say about that, David, is the December 29th meeting, I had a couple of additions that I had to make after the first.
You sent those out to us, correct?
I did.
Posted on the website, the corrected versions.
I tried to, yes.
Yes. All right.
I'll make a motion that we accept them both as, with the corrections on the first one and then on the second one.
All right.
I'll make that, to accept them.
All right. Does that second?
I second it.
All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment. If we can keep it to less than three minutes, that would be good. I will just go down my list of people here. Amber Stevens?
No.
April Lyman?
No.
Danny Taylor? Danny?
Yes.
Public comment?
Yes.
All right.
I was wondering if after snowstorms and stuff, if the town would sand our hill for us?
Well, if not being a town road, we have been advised that we can't do that.
So other ones, it's okay to do that on then?
I don't believe that there are any that are not town roads.
There are two others that are being sanded and plowed, one of them being plowed, only two being sanded. And I guess my other question is, if you're saying no on that, is we are able to go over to the town garage and get sand to sand our own hill then?
Individuals can get sand from the, from the town garage, certainly.
What about loading my sander with my own loader to sand my hill?
I believe we have not allowed people to bring sanders in to load them to do that. But I don't know if we've ever had a, a concern for that for a, for town residents, but.
Good Matt can comment on that?
About what?
About going over there and if I load my own sander just for this hill, if that's permissible to do.
As long as the select board's all right with it.
Well, I've just, I've seen it happen here not too long ago, and I was just wondering if it's okay for me to do that.
I wasn't aware of that happening.
Oh, okay.
Danny, are you saying another individual filled their sander truck with the town sand?
I thought it was pretty much aware, but we won't worry about it, I guess.
Okay. As long as it's for your, as long as it's for their hill, they do pay taxes, I don't see why, why they can't use the sand.
I mean, individuals can use the sand for their own driveways. The hill is, is similar to that. So I, I don't know that that's a huge issue myself.
Jimmy, what about you?
Um, I don't really have an issue with it. I mean, people have used sand for a long time for the driveways and, I mean, I don't have an issue with it.
I mean, if it, if it came that you were taking five loads of, a storm out of there or something, which I don't think will be the case, then we might revisit it or something. But if you needed some for it, I, I don't know that we have an issue with that, Danny.
Okay, but the town will not sand it for us?
As being a private road, we don't sand private roads.
All right, I was just curious on that, because the Tofer's driveway being private and being sanded, I thought maybe we could get some help too.
Okay. All right, anything else, Danny?
Uh, not at this time.
All right. Darlene?
No. Oh, wait a minute, just a minute, David.
Yeah?
Oh, I just found out that there's two weight permits down on the table that you need to sign.
For 2021?
Yes.
Okay.
Only him, Darlene, and do we all need to sign them?
David needs to sign it.
Perfect.
Leave those with the, with the warrant.
Yes, I will do, it's on the table already.
Okay. All right, Dennis Maranti, do you have anything?
Yeah, just, what has been done on Taylor Hill in the past as far as sanding?
My understanding is that they have taken care of it themselves.
So why would there be a change now?
Well, they asked if they could use the sand in a sander to go up through there where anybody else can go and shovel pails or a ton load for their own, for their own use. So I'm not sure that it's, it's just, it's a longer hill, longer driveway.
Yeah, well, my question is, it's been done one way for all these years. Why are they concerned now to do it differently? I don't know. It doesn't matter to me, but.
They have asked, and we have said we don't seem to have a problem with that, so.
Okay. I was just wondering, what has, how has it been handled in the past? Where did they get the sand in the past?
David, David, when I sand it, I sand it with my own sand. That's the way I've done it in the past.
That's what I suspected, but I don't, I did not know that, so.
No, that's all I was asking, Danny.
All right. Um, let's see. Anything else to ask?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Don Capinselli, anything for public comment?
He said no.
No? Donna Carrier?
No, here's my vote, nothing.
Donna Carrier, anything for public comment?
Uh, no, David, I don't.
Okay. Donna, anything for public comment? All right, we'll move on. Hannah, anything for public comment?
No.
Janet Perry, anything for public comment?
No, not at this time.
All right. Krista Gay, anything for public comment?
No, no.
Okay. Lynn Morgan, anything for public comment?
No.
All right. Mark Kinkerman, anything for public comment?
I guess I have a question. Why can't the town sand be loaded with a loader?
What?
Why can't the town sand be loaded into a private truck with a loader?
Well, we don't do that. We don't use our equipment to load trucks full of sand. If people want to gather their own sand, they, we have never had a problem with that, but we don't load it.
Is there a problem with someone using their own equipment to load the sand into their, into their own equipment?
Well, we just talked to Danny about that, and, and we didn't have a, we did not have a problem with that.
Got you. Okay, that's all.
All right. Matt, anything for?
Nope.
All right. Bob Fisher, anything for public comment?
Not for public comment, thank you.
All right. Sandy Capinselli? Sherry Maher, anything for public comment?
Yes, David. I wanted, you know, as you guys all know, I'm involved with the Athenian, and I have a question about the fact that there have been a few special meetings in recent time, and I know I'm not finding out anything about them until after the fact. And I'm just curious as to how those are being notified, and if there is any way of getting notice out. I know that a number of years back, actually when Dennis Maranti was on the board, there was a request Dennis had made at that time about having an email list to let people know if there's a special meeting coming up. And I'm wondering whatever happened to that. I know I put my name on that list, I don't know who else did, but I never receive any notice about special meetings.
Okay. I'm not sure about the email chain there or not. We post it on the website, Darlene notifies the press on it, and we post it three places in town if there is a special meeting.
Okay, well, can you add either myself or Dennis Hunt or the Athenian email itself as part of what you're notifying when that happens?
We could do that.
Thank you.
All right. Ted Reeves, do you have anything for public comment?
No, sir.
All right. Tim Stevenson?
None.
Tina White, anything for public comment?
No, not at this time.
All right. We will move on to the budget review with the budget committee. Janet?
Yes? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I asked Hannah if she'd take the lead on this. Um. To go over the changes that we've made since our last meeting.
So I emailed out the budget to the select board and the budget committee a couple hours ago. And I can just go over what's changed since we looked at it last. And then there's one more change that I'm aware of, and we can talk about whatever, whatever changes other people might want too. So, and does everyone on the select board have that?
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
Cool. So I'll just go, there's one expense that we added, which was a training budget for the highway, and that was for $1,000, and we put that under highway garage. So you probably no need to even scroll to it, but it's a new line item, so that if the highway crew needs to take a training, we've got some money set aside for that. And let's see, thought I had one other. Okay, see, and then there's one in revenues on the front page. We realized, actually Mike Bates pointed it out, that we hadn't been budgeting for interest on delinquent taxes, which is actually, it's actually a revenue. We don't ever know exactly how much we're gonna, how many, how much tax is gonna go delinquent, but we have, we look back over the past few years, and we've gotten between like $2,400 and $4,000 in interest from that. So we put $3,000 in as a revenue line item, which just means that we can expect there will be some revenue, and that will reduce what we have to raise from taxes.
All right.
And then the, the last thing is we put in a line for a surplus. So that's at the bottom of the revenue section. And we, so this is budget adjustment for previous year surplus deficit, we put in $45,000. And we arrived at that because we brought in more revenue than expected in this year due to a couple of extra grants, including kind of a lump sum state highway grant that was not expected. And also a correction of an accounting error that Darlene and I had been doing for a few years, where we had been underreporting current tax revenue. So about $20,000, and this doesn't affect how much money the town actually has, it just affects where it shows up in the balance sheet. But so that, we just put all the correction into this year. And in addition, the town spent $61,328 less than we budgeted. So some of that was for the, the $32,000 for the bathroom that didn't get built in the town garage, but there was another, you know, $30,000 or so that didn't get spent. So, so combining those, we came up with the $45,000. We actually reduced the, the total by a little bit because some of that accounting error I mentioned was from previous years, and it didn't seem, it wasn't relevant. So it subtracted about $15,000 because of that. And that $32,000 is not in that figure because that would need to get voted on, on the article that the select board is creating, so. So that's where we stand for the budget committee's recommendations. There's just one more thing that I mentioned in the email, which was the tires for the grader. The work got done in December, so work got done in 2020, but the invoice is on today's warrant, so it will hit the 2021 budget. So I was gonna say we should add that $63,000 back onto here.
It's not 6300, is it?
6,300, I'm sorry. Those are really expensive tires. Yeah, so down on the, down on the grader repair line item, it's currently at $3,000, so if we add it, it'll go up to $9300 in order to pay for those tires we just bought.
Were those, were those actually in the budget for last year? So are you gonna put that as part of the surplus?
Well, it was, yeah, it was surplus. It wasn't spent for last year, so it is in that surplus. And so if we add it to the budget, it'll raise the top line by $6,300 also.
All right.
The other thing I would like to mention, the select board never got back to us about the highway, if you were going to increase their pay or not, so we haven't done anything with that. We kept it like it was.
Okay. James, do you have anything? Any questions or anything?
No, no, I don't.
All right.
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. So do we want to make a motion to go with final budget to be printed in the town report?
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anything else for the budget committee?
Oh, I think that was everything, except for, did you guys look at the, the warranty information that Matt gave you guys?
I thought we would take that up during roads, actually.
Okay, all right.
Well, we've accepted the budget as it is, and if we're gonna add that to it, we're gonna need to change it.
What?
No, that, that would come out of the air, I thought.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to boards and officials. Amber, anything for the lifters?
No.
All right. Don, anything for cemetery or?
The only thing I would have, David, is the advisory commission to the Unified District K-88, but I think I've let Lynn lead off on school stuff first and maybe weigh in along with her.
Okay. Lynn, do you have anything for boards and officials?
Just wanted to let you know that we had passed a budget, but there, we got numbers from the state which are not matching up, so we will be having a special meeting tomorrow to try to figure this out, and then we will be getting the budget warrant to Darlene for the town report. Will you be able to have that by the 25th? Goal. Okay. That's why we're meeting tomorrow.
Lynn, I had a couple of questions for you. We've got the, the article that you, that the school board is putting out. Now, you are going to have a school district vote on that article, along with the town voting on that article, is that correct?
I didn't quite catch all of what you said. I'm sorry.
So my understanding is the school district, Windham Northeast Elementary Board Union, is going to have a meeting, a senior's town meeting, and vote on the article about the drawing from its, the draws of the district.
No, no, no.
All we have to do is get on it. The town of Athens is in, no.
You're breaking up. It, it's going to be ballot, the Australian ballot vote. We're gonna have a town meeting to give information out prior to the Australian ballot.
I understand that, but there are gonna be two Australian ballots with the same question, is that correct? I saw an email saying that the school district was going to have the vote on this question that the town had to vote on. Is that correct or not?
District. David, I can't see how they can ask the same question on two different Australian ballots and have the same people vote on it.
Because it's, it's the town voting on it, and it's then the school district, and the town and the school district are considered separate. My understanding was that they both had to vote on it. That was the advice of the lawyers. But I just wanted to be, make that clear from all of us.
That's a question I'll have to ask Jack and get back to you guys.
All right. The other question I, for Athens, will we be voting on that on our Australian ballot? Or will the school district have their own ballot for school director?
The way I understand it, it's all, each town has their own ballot, and it's the town folks will vote to, to either allow the withdrawal or not allow the withdrawal from the district.
Yes, no, I understand that, but I'm saying about the school directors. The last time we voted, we voted on school directors from each of the three towns. Athens voted on the ones from Grafton and Westminster and Athens.
Oh, I see, you're talking about the school directors, okay. Yeah, the, I honestly don't, no, I don't understand that yet. I'll have to run that past the board and double check on that.
I saw.
That's a good question.
Lynn, I actually have a question for you. You said the numbers weren't matching up, were, is there a problem? Are they saying we owe more than we do, or they want to pay less?
It's something to do with the, the way they figure out the equalized students and how much they're paid per student. So it's, it's all in that format that they sent to us, that the numbers are not jiving, so.
The number of students, the number of students isn't jiving, or the number of dollars?
The dollars are not driving and matching up with what we had, so we have to relook at it and see what the problem is.
And is that only for this district, or is it all the equalized people for the whole state?
It was just our district. We only get the information from our, for our own district.
Okay.
David?
Yeah?
I added the school director to the list of, of town officials, that we needed a school director.
I don't know that we do, though. That's what we need to find out, because when we elected the school board, we had to do it all as a district and just as a town, but the members would come from each town. I'd like to clarify that as to how we have to vote on this year for the year.
Yeah. Okay, I will, I will get that clarified. I know we need two board members from Athens, and I was told to find somebody and get them. So that's the best I know. I will talk and get more information.
And so, David, if she needs, if we need to have a school official, another school board official, do they need to fill out paperwork to get on the Australian ballot?
Yes.
I, I believe they would, but I'm not sure that they, I'm not sure how it's gonna be on there, if it's going to be just two people from Athens and we vote on that, or if we vote on everybody from Westminster, Grafton, Athens, or if we don't vote on them at all, and the school district has their own ballot to vote on it.
I know.
And that's what I'd like to have.
I know the school district is not doing a ballot. We're not meeting, we're doing it just through the, the individual towns this year.
Okay. So if we could just get that cleared out, that, that would be good. If we, we have until Monday.
Yep.
Before everything has to be resolved, so if we can just figure that out, that would be good.
Will do.
All right. Anything else for Lynn? Not hearing anything. No, there's Sherry. Sherry, anything for me?
Yeah, just to let you know that we have submitted a grant in the town, the town, but sort of the town and the Historic Society partnering in this grant. It's a grant to the Paul H. Brune Fund that is part of the Vermont Preservation Trust. And what we're hoping to do is get money through that grant to match money that we will, we have available to go after the painting and work on getting the windows restored, so that we're aiming, I think I talked about this at a previous meeting, our goal for this coming season is to take care of the exterior of the building, so painting, window restoring or window rebuilding, depending on the condition of the windows. And we also were pleased to receive via the Historic Society, a sizable donation from a private foundation, which is really helping us significantly move forward with this plan. which is really, uh, helping us significantly move forward with this, uh, plan for this summer.
Does the Meow House have any plans on repaying some of the money that was borrowed? I know I keep asking that, but it, it's something that needs to be taken care of.
Yep, I know, and, uh, we are still working on trying to get the building up to a standard that we're gonna be able to have it uh, generating some income. Um, we did, uh, respond to that question uh, in writing back, I don't know, a year and a half or two years ago in December when that first was put to us. And we never received a response from the board, uh, at that point in time. Um, so at this point, no, there is not a set plan. We know that that money is there and, um, was a loan, um, and I don't really have anything more to say beyond that, but that we're wanting to get the building into a straight, a state where we'll be able to, uh, realize income from it. And then that can be utilized to help repay those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, Tim, anything for the, uh, Emergency Committee or?
Yeah, um, I think I'd like to start off with thanking, uh, Matt for, uh, getting our trailer reregistered. Thank you, Matt. Um, I'd also like to make mention that we have been very fortunate to have two people, um, stepped forward to become part of our committee. Uh, Tina White and Witchy Arto, both great people. They have been involved in a, uh, couple of, um, very, uh, worthwhile, uh, orientation meetings that we've had lately. Um, so that we feel like we're up to speed now in terms of people. Unfortunately, we've lost, over the last year or so, we've lost three people, Lois Sipple, Bev Hutchins, and Gordon Pugh. Um, but I feel like, um, Witchy and, um, and Tina, uh, are most adequate to fill the spaces left. We are in the process of getting a letter out to the entire town. Homeowners and part timers as well, so everyone's on the same page. The letter contains basically a statement of, uh, what we're all about, reminding people that basically we're concerned with weather, um, emergencies. In fact, we've renamed ourselves the Athens Weather Emergency Committee. And we have a brief outline of the things that we do. Well, everyone should be getting one. And then on the back of this letter, uh, we, um, outline the, um, uh, various parts of the community that each one of us is responsible for. What we call zones, emergency zone. And that will let people know, uh, who live on a certain road, who they should contact, um, and, and what conditions they should do that. Um, if I haven't mentioned it at an earlier meeting, I would also like to, uh, mention that, um, we have reestablished contact with the American Red Cross. Um, and, um, through some great work that Lynn especially was active in, we have now reestablished a, a working relationship with them. So that we return to the situation that when they are available in an emergency, they will come and take over the shelter um, that we have at the community church, uh, and that we will be running it in the meantime. So that's, that's basically it. Thank you, David.
Alright. Anybody else have, anything for officials?
I have, I have one thing, David.
Yeah?
My informal role as IT support, um, a couple of people have asked about re, video recordings of these video meetings. And, uh, I, I looked at our Google subscription and, um, they've changed the features that they give out for each level of subscription, and we no longer have that feature. So if it was important to be able to record these meetings, um, we would have to basically pay twice as much. It would go up from $6 per user per month to $12 per user per month.
Alright, I mean, a person could record this on their own device.
A person could use a voice recorder or some other software, probably. I haven't tried.
Yeah, I see Fact TV is here. Are they recording this, or are they just here as? Public? Okay.
They are recording this. That TV is, was, is my understanding. Alright, anything else for Boards and Officials? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to Taylor Hill. We put this on the, um, we had a meeting, uh, lateral executive session, to discuss the, the report that was given to the town. Um. We had some questions for that, and we, um, gave that, those questions to our attorney, who hopefully, uh, transmitted those to Bob Fisher. Bob, did you get those?
Uh, well, I got an email today with some questions, uh, regarding, uh, the report and whether Ted had picked the test, uh, test pit sites, or whether the uh, folks on the road had, and there was some concern in his email that the, uh, the people who reside on Taylor Hill Road had written parts of the report. So to that, we can certainly have Ted Reeves speak. And then, uh, Michael Tarrant also had questions regarding the survey, and I can speak to that. The idea of having a survey would be done if we can reach, uh, an agreement with the town. It doesn't make sense to spend that money until such time as an agreement can be reached as to, for instance, what culverts are getting replaced, how much gravel's being put on, uh, those particular matters. So, uh, I let Mr. Tarrant know that. Uh, of course, if, if we continue in the court, a survey is obviously part of a road being taken over, so it will have to be done at some point. Uh, the question is, is when? So I think we should talk to other details first before we, uh, talk about the survey.
Yeah, I, I think there were some more questions in that. I'm not sure if he has transmitted those all to you. And I don't really want to, uh, do that at the meeting here, just open it up for questions and answers and stuff. I'd rather have that in writing between the, between you and Mr. Tarrant, um, to, uh, to do it in writing, so we can all have it and all see it and, and deal with that. Is that reasonable with you, Bob?
Uh, yes, but if you could ask Mr. Tarrant to specifically ask those questions, because I'm looking at the only email I have from him on this, he did ask about a traffic study. And the answer is no, a traffic study has not been, uh, done by the residents of Taylor Hill. Uh, nor in my view is that required, uh, for a road to be taken over under Title 19. Uh, and then he asked a question as to, uh, what is the reason the culverts wouldn't be replaced prior to the road becoming a town highway? Uh, and I think Mr. Reeves can speak to that. So, but if there are more questions, my, my point is so that we can adequately respond to you and Mr. Tarrant. Uh, uh, please have him, I, you know, list those questions out. We will certainly respond to those.
We did
And I would just like to note that he did allow, I asked him if I was able to speak at this meeting, and for the record, he did give consent for me to speak at the meeting despite him not being on the meeting.
Sure, no, that's, that's certainly fine. Um, we did have, I think there were some more questions, uh, and we will get with him to make sure that they, that they are, you know, all done, and I think it'd be better for everybody to have them, uh, in writing instead of trying to, um, do it over a Zoom meeting here. Um, I think that would be just reasonable and fair for everybody. Does anybody else have anything that they want to contribute to?
I have a question, David.
Alright.
Is the, the, uh, engineer report public information?
I believe it is.
Okay, just asking, thanks.
Any, any? The, uh, public or not public?
Well, we have no problem with it being public. Um, I don't believe Mr. Reeves says, and speak up, Mr. Reeves, if you disagree. Uh, the, uh, as, just as far as answering some of your questions, I do think, just given that you seem to have more questions each meeting, if Mr. Reeves can at least address some of those tonight, that may be helpful in terms of trying to get us to where we can make an agreement, uh.
Well, I, I would like to get to an agreement or get, get a resolution to this as soon as we can. But I would prefer it to be in writing, uh, that my connection is not terribly great here. I hear some things, I don't hear others. Uh, I don't want for the people, everybody involved, I think it would, it would be better and, uh, reasonable just to have a, we would provide question, putting and the answers, right? What I would hope.
Do we, um, and do it, have it pulled and done with that way?
Would Ted be able to answer the questions that you brought up? And then the lawyer can also put those in writing, because there's a bunch of people here, myself included, that would like to hear those answers instead of having to keep coming back week after week after week.
Alright, I don't, I didn't, I think, like I said, I didn't hear quite a few questions. I think you wanted Ted to answer some of the questions that were put out and then the I don't mind if he has the questions. I don't think, maybe we have all the questions. I haven't seen email, uh, that our attorney sent, uh, to the attorney for the Taylor Hill. Um. I would prefer it in writing so that we not here, up, all here hours of
I, I understand that, and I'm not trying to be difficult. It just seems that the questions about who dug the test holes, and then who wrote the report, are yes, no questions that could be answered in 30 seconds by Ted here.
So if I may, I'll jump in and I'll answer those two questions. Um, there was one section of the report that I asked, uh, April to help me with, and that was a little bit of history. Um, about, you know, when Taylor Hill was started, and so that's the only section of the report that was written by anybody else other than myself. Um, and that is, uh, the second section of the report, right after introduction, the history. And I do have a footnote there that says the history was provided by April Lyman. Um, as far as the test pit locations, I selected all of those myself. I did not have any input from any of the residents on Taylor Hill. Um, I, we started at the top, up by the pond, and punched the first hole in there. And, um, after we dug the hole, I jumped in there and took some measurements and some photographs. And while, uh, Dan Taylor was, uh, back filling that hole, I drove down the road, picked out the next location, uh, he came along with, uh, Tom and, and, uh, I don't think April was with us at that point, but we dug the second hole, and then, uh, while he was back filling that one, I drove further down the hill and picked out the third spot and so on until we had all five locations. And as I was going, uh, and looking for locations to put those test pits in, I was specifically looking for places where there might be, you know, we might encounter ledge, or that there might be water, because, you know, the vegetation type, or um, the area around it looked like it might be wet, or there might be ledge present. So I specifically picked those locations, with the exception of the last one, which is the one, if you're driving up Taylor Hill, it'll be the first one you would come to. And that location I picked because it's on the fill portion of that initial section of the hill. And, um, I wanted to make sure that there was decent material underneath the roadbed. And that we didn't encounter something like ledge, or that there was a clay layer under there, or something along that line. So with, to the extent that we dug those test pits, all of them were in pretty decent material, and, um, so, and that's the basis that I chose the locations. I had no, no influence or input from, um, anybody on Taylor Hill.
Alright, um, I've, uh, look at our attorney, sure that he, he has sent you all the questions, and hopefully we can, uh, like I say, I would prefer we resolve this sooner rather than later, and as I think probably everybody does. I don't think we need to drag things out continually. Uh, James, do you have anything?
Yeah, how have you guys progressed, um, on the issue of getting an agreement for deeds up all the way through the road?
We have, we have not at this point. Again, the deeds would be one of the last things that would need to be done along with the survey, uh, in any course of laying out a town road pursuant to the statute. Um, so, uh, I have not prepared those deeds. That would be something that comes later on in, in the process.
Okay. Um, Denise, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I know that, um, when we met last week, there was concern. Someone mentioned that Taylor Hill is a new road, so it has to meet new road standards, so I'm still not quite sure where we are with that.
Well, I, I'm not sure if that was one of the questions that was sent in or not. I think it was, um, but we can, we can do that by, uh, like I said, I don't want to get into others here. I'd rather have it all in writing so that we can, that it'll be simple and easy, and we all, we all have the same understanding of it in black and white.
So I have a quick question Denise just brought up. I have a question, um. If, if we are going to be held to now, as Denise said, to a different road standard, why was that not put into our final decision from August 25th? In that August 25th, it said we needed to be held to the state standard, is, which is what Ted did his report on. And now Denise is mentioning that we may be held to a new road standard?
No, there's no difference in the standard.
Not, uh, Tina, not a new road standard. It's the same standard. But what, what the discussion was, is Taylor Hill is a new road to the town, even though it's been established for a while. And so that it has to be up to the road standards. It, I think it's just, um, a matter of wording. I'm, I'm not sure why it was brought up, but it was brought up that it is a, to the town, it's a new road.
And if you read the report, if you read Mr. Reeves' report, it does meet the town road specifications that the town set forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, alright, so let's not get back and forth, a lot, like I said. I would prefer that we have this in writing. Uh, we have the questions, uh, we transmitted our attorney, hopefully. Uh, he has transmitted them. If not, uh, we will see that he does, and, um, and then we'll, we will go from there. But I, I think if questioning and answering here in the meeting is not, uh, is not, uh, is not beneficial for anybody. Other things that they want to say or comment on about Taylor?
Uh, I have a question, um, just being that I am not a resident of Taylor Hill, but I've been interested in this whole debate discussion since it came up, uh, what, a year and a half ago now? Um. I understand what you're saying, David, about having, um, information in black and white and have everybody on the same page, but those of us that are not getting copies of that, because we're not residents, but if we're interested in the issue, how can we be, um, aware or informed of those items?
You could come to the town office, um, and see that. The report is there, uh, that Mr. Reeves made out. Um, some of the other things are there. Uh, there will be a few documents that aren't public record, but certainly, uh, certainly you can have the work product, uh, that Mr. Reeves put out and, and the questions and answers that were, um, that were done, as far as I know, that, that would be public, public information.
And, and seeing as how minutes for these meetings are sent out electronically, is it possible for some of these it possible for some of these documents that are public record to be attached to those minutes?
I'm not sure. If you want a specific, a specific record, maybe Darlene can, can do that, but if somebody wants all of the first poll end records digitally sent to them, that would be, that would be difficult. So the, you send out could be problematic. So if you have something that you request, hopefully Darlene would be able to do that for you. If not, you can certainly come to the town office and, and receive a copy of that.
Well, something like the, the engineer's report, I think would be easy enough to attach if it's now a doc, public document.
So, okay. Anybody else have anything for Taylor Hill? If not, we will move on to the town warning. Does everybody have a copy that Darlene sent out? Well, everybody does. Jim and Denise? And does anybody else want to, that wants to comment on that warning? Do you have this year completed and all Darlene typed?
The...
No, David, I haven't started on it yet because I don't do it until we, we go over the warning in the first place.
So I think we should go down through each, each section and just put it in as we have it here. Do we have any new requests, Darlene, for funding or anything?
Just the usuals.
Do we have any other articles that anybody brought in for?
The only articles I have are what came from the school.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we need to put that in there, but...
Yeah.
So in the header, in the header, I would think we would want to change that a little bit. The legal voters of town Athens are hereby notified. That town meeting will be by Australian ballot on the, at the town office. Is that reasonable with everybody?
Yep.
That's, that's fine.
So we, we make sure that people know that it's going to be all Australian ballot.
Do you want to put in that it will be open from 10 to 7?
That's correct. Balloting will be 10 to 7, or by absentee ballot, that can be requested from the town clerk. Article one, I think we remove article one. Article three, I'm not sure on if we vote on that. Which is to see if the town will elect a road commissioner. If a road commissioner on the ballot, I'm not sure how that will, how that will play out, but I believe that we have to, that we have to vote on that each year. So...
So if we're, if we're gonna possibly vote not to have a road commissioner, either way, we still have to have one on the ballot?
So if, if article three from last year is to see if the town will vote to elect a road commissioner, if that is voted down, then I think the, the voting on the person in the, but we would have to find that out with the Secretary of State. But I think that would be just null. But we have to put it in as a road commissioner as an office because it's an office right now. And then, well, so I think that stays in. Get two, if we get a no vote on that, we will just have to figure out how that...
If we get a no vote on article three, which is to elect a road, road commissioner, if we get a no vote on that, then we just null and void whoever was chosen as road commissioner?
I think that would probably be the way it would go, but we would have to check probably with the Secretary of State or an attorney on that. But that would be my, that would be my first impression of that, yes.
Would it be possible to have an article that, because it's unclear, what, what, if we don't elect a road commissioner, does it automatically fall onto the select board or does that need to be a choice?
It falls to the select board.
Okay.
It's not elect one, the select board appoints one.
Say that again?
I said if the, if the, if the town does not elect one, then the select board appoints one.
Well, the question is to see if the town will elect a road commissioner. If the town says no, they do not want to elect a road commissioner, does the select board automatically become road commissioners?
Yeah. I believe we can serve it, we can appoint, we can appoint ourselves as road commissioner. Is my understanding. So I believe what it was, article three last year needs to stay in there. Article four, to elect all town officers required by law. If we put, if after Lynn finds out, school district is voted on in our meeting, which it probably is, then that should be changed to let all town and town school district officers required by law by Australian ballot.
And David, are they gonna be on the same, are they all gonna be on one ballot or on the one Australian ballot or just the town official's gonna be on a second, separate page?
From the school.
No, the regular Australian ballot for all the questions that we need to ask. Do all the town officials get not Australian ballots? Do we only have one? Or is there just a separate page for all the town officials?
I think because of the size of it, we will probably have two sheets. So one will probably be the elected officials and one will be the, the articles.
The articles? Okay. I think that makes sense.
So I'm not sure that we have, article four, I think can go in the header and just say to elect all town. And then if we need to, town school district officers required by law by Australian ballot, but it doesn't go in the warning itself.
It would be on the header of all the officials?
No, it would be on the header of the, the legal voters, the town of Athens are hereby notified. Right at the very top. Do you have your last year's warning with you?
I do. I'm looking at it on the screen. That's why I keep turning my head away.
Oh, um, yeah. If, that should go up into the header of the warning. To elect all town officer, we'll say it this way, to elect all town officers required by law by Australian ballot. And that goes in the header.
Okay, I'm not quite understanding where you want to put that in.
Right at the very top. Darlene, as it says now, from last year's warning, it said the legal voters of the town of Athens are hereby notified to meet at the elementary school. We're taking out the elementary school. We're putting in this year's date. All articles to be voted on by Australian ballot at the town, at the town office between seven, between 10 and 7. And, and to elect all officers, we can put down require, elect all officers required by law by Australian ballot. And that goes in that top section there.
Yeah, got it.
So article four is, is gone, but it's, it's just moved up to the top.
Yeah.
Article five, to authorize the select board to borrow money. And I would take out the word respectively. And then if necessary, for current expenses in anticipation of collection of taxes, respectively was in there when it used to say the town and town school district. So I would just strike that out, but have that in there. Is that reasonable with you Denise?
Um, respectively kind of sounds nice, but if it's not necessary, take it out. I mean, it, it's being courteous to say we're gonna do it respectively, that we're not gonna just borrow money on a whim, but...
Well, no, it was in there, it was in there respectively because it used to say the school board and the select board.
Okay.
But since it's only says the town, it's, it's not really needed.
Can I suggest something that these get worded as like yes or no questions because someone's gonna be voting on a yes or no?
Yes, we have to have a, we, we all, they all have to be a yes or no question in the ballot when we, when we design the ballot. They all have to be. James, do you have anything with number five from last year's?
No, I do not.
All right.
At the top, at the very top where it says warning, annual town of Athens town meeting, do we have to add something about the school in there? Because we will...
We've got to find out. We've got to find out. Because we're not voting on their issues. We're not voting on their budget. We're not, it's not town and town school district because there is no town school districts. It's unified district.
Okay.
And the question that we have put in there about letting, allowing Westminster withdraw that article, the school district article.
Okay. And what about the articles that we get from Jack to be put in about the budget? Do we need to put that in there as a warning? I forwarded that to you.
I've not seen the all about the budget. Okay, well, then we may have to put that in. I, I did not see the...
We have an item about the budget and...
Article would, to withdraw, let's allow Westminster to withdraw.
We have that one too, but we also have one which I forwarded to you, but it's not even good yet. It was three articles. One was to elect a moderator and treasurer. And then one was the budget. And then elect the school board members. I'm not clear on that yet.
We will still fund it on Lynn. That's what we do. We may very well have to do that.
Okay.
And if we do, then we will add that in. So our old article five is in there. Article six, if the town vote to collect taxes on the 10th of September. Last two, any reason we will have to change that this year?
To change it from the 10th of September?
Change it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason why we need to change that. Because like you said, it was just based on the school and there. And it was because of the school budget that we had to change the date. And they do have the budget, so...
Well, it was because we didn't have the figures, we didn't have the figures from the state. That's why we couldn't... But I think we should keep it as the 10th of September. And then if something comes up again, then we can just move it to October like we've done for the past few years. But I think it should remain the 10th of September.
All right. What do you think about that?
It should remain the 10th.
All right. Then we'll, article six will be the same except it'll say 2021. Article seven, the list of blinquent taxpayers in town report, that can be in there. Article nine, shall the voters of the town of Athens approve the sum of $32,000 for the construction? I don't have perfect wording on that, but it's, to replace that article with something that says, shall the town use the $32,000 approved at the 2020 town meeting for the construction of a bathroom at the town garage to reduce taxes and to be transferred to the general fund in 2021.
Okay. So if they decide not to switch it to the general fund, what is gonna happen to that money? If they vote no, what happens to that money?
Then that money, I believe, stays there until we either vote, they, the townspeople either vote to change it or we build a bathroom.
Okay. A bathroom cannot be built for $32,000 because half the money was gonna be donated in kind. Mike Bates was gonna do the work. And so I don't think the bathroom can be built for $32,000, but we, we never got new figures on that.
That's true. So I mean, if they say no, then the money will stay there in a, toward the bathroom. And then we would have to go back to town to raise more money to actually complete the bathroom.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any better wording or better sounding or have an idea of a better way to frame that question? Jenna?
Not offhand.
Hannah? No, Jen, you were saying something else. I cut you off.
I was just wondering...
Jenna, do you have something else?
I was just wondering if it could be put in there to make it so that they know it would stay in that fund for that purpose if it's not returned to the taxpayer.
I'm thinking that, that, I'm thinking that that will be hopefully self inflammatory and winged out at the informational meeting, but I don't want to get the article any longer or more confused than, than it needs to be.
Okay.
David, can I?
Hannah, do you, yeah.
David, can I ask something here?
Go ahead. Go on.
Does anybody know what our state requirements or federal, federal requirements are for having a bathroom at the town garage? I mean, if, if it's mandated that we have to have a bathroom there and we already put $32,000 away for a bathroom, to me, it seems almost better to leave it there for the bathroom and maybe try to add more so we could slowly build up enough to put the bathroom in.
Well...
I mean, if it is someday to put a bathroom in, we got the money, the people already put it out there, why divert it somewhere else and then go back in a year or two and ask them for more?
Well, we don't want, we don't want to just leave money laying there and then raise money for the general, general, uh, general budget there. If we have money there, we're down and keep the budget down. And this is one way to do it. We know we can't build a, build it by putting out to bid for $32,000, but this would, this would be something that you could discuss at the informational meeting on it, on the, on the article. You can discuss saying that you would rather go back.
All I'm trying to say is we already bit the bullet, put $32,000 in. We're gonna pay one way or the other. We're gonna pay one way or the other, you know? Uh, my concern is, what is the requirements for us to have a bathroom or not have a bathroom?
Yeah, I think at this moment in time, we are not out of compliance. Um, by in the town, by using the town office.
Okay.
But. Alright, so Jimmy, did you have anything? You think anything better how to word that or how to put that together?
No, I, I don't.
Alright, I will.
David, David, this Don Capinselli, last I knew, we still had a fair amount of money in the town office renovation funds, and that doesn't seem to be going anywhere either.
Well, we know we still have some work to do at the town office, so, I, I mean, we could, we could try to do that, but know that there is still work to be done there, um. So I'm not, I, I think we, we work on this this year, and if we decide the town office fund needs it. We could do that in a subsequent meeting, town meeting. Denise, is that reasonable?
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, David, I just stepped out to get a drink of water. I, I, I missed what he said.
Don, Don mentioned that there is money in the town office renovation fund.
Yeah, I heard that part.
Could be, could probably be sent back to the I, as, uh, if I'm stating it wrong, Don, let me know, but I said, we know there's still work to be done at the town office. And I, I would not wanna take that out at this time. Uh, it can be done at a future meeting or something to put it in the general fund, but uh, not complete, and I, I think we leave that there at least for this, for the time being.
I would say yes, leave it there for the time being because it would put another warning on the, on, it would put another article on the warning asking to move money from one place to another place again. Um, as David was saying, there is work that needs to be done.
Jim?
So we're just moving money from, I mean, it's just going from one year, we're not.
Yeah, we have this more fund that.
Hannah, do you know off the top of your head how much is in that fund?
I can look, are you talking about the town office renovation fund now?
Yes.
I can look real quick. Um, twenty-eight thousand, almost twenty-nine thousand.
So, if this was voted down and they wanted to leave the money in for a bathroom at the town garage. We might have another meeting and be able to take money from there and not have to raise, raise taxes to do it, to complete that project if we wanted to do, I'm still thinking that we wanna leave that where that, the town renovation money where it is for now. Are we good with that?
I would say yes, leave it where it is, and then if they decide not to move the thirty-two thousand and keep it in for the bathroom. Perhaps over the summer, we can have a special town meeting to see if we can combine some of those funds together. Um, but we do need a solid figure because like I said, that thirty-two thousand dollars that Mike came up with, he was gonna do a lot of that labor. So all that needs to be looked into, we need estimates, and it all has to be rebid.
Yeah, and we would have to revote it again too, if, if it, if this passes. And we then put another one in, we would just have to re-vote it, and, and the vote from last year would just go away, this would have it go, just go away, and we'd start anew. So, alright, to see how many dollars the town will vote to raise.
David, could we go back to that just for a minute, because I didn't get the wording?
I will, I will email the wording to you, darling.
Okay, great, great.
Um. Article ten, to see how many dollars the town will vote to raise to defray town expenses. Um.
And that has to be a figure that's on the Australian ballot because there's no discussion at.
That is, so to see if the town uh, to see if the town will raise, and then we put in uh, put in the, put in the figure to defray town expenses.
Correct.
You got that, Darlene?
See if the town will.
Will raise, and then we put in the figure
Yeah.
to defray expenses.
Yeah.
Alright. Article eleven uh, will stay the same. It'll be just yes or no. Um, article.
David.
Yeah.
I have a question, uh, where should we put the article in about the trash?
Oh, yeah.
We can put that after article the article to raise, how much to raise town expenses, to raise the funds. So, in last year's, it would to raise is number ten. Making the trash article number eleven.
Actually, those numbers will be changed, David, because you took out article one, two.
No, I, I know, I know the numbers aren't gonna be right, but just as we're going off last year's uh, warning there.
Yeah, okay.
Put it after that, is that reasonable with everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
And who's gonna do the wording for that article?
Uh, you had some, didn't you? Hannah?
Sorry, what was the question?
You had the warning, the wording for the, for the uh, uh, track, correct?
Uh, Mike Bates did.
Okay. Well, can somebody get, get it from him? There were two, I think there were two versions of it, wasn't there?
Yes, I have them right here if you wanna hear, hear the.
Yes, yes, Janet, go right ahead.
Um, shall the town of Athens, Athens voters change its trash recycling schedule from weekly trash, bi-weekly recycle to bi-weekly trash bi-weekly recycle with trash and recycling having alternative weeks starting April first, two thousand twenty-one. The other one is.
Yeah, go ahead.
The other one, he, he sent us two, to see if the town of Athens voters will allow the town of Athens selectmen to change the weekly trash, bi-weekly recycling pickup to bi-weekly trash bi-weekly recycling pickup with trash being one week, recycling being the next, starting April first. This will increase the trash recycling budget by an estimated eight hundred and fifty dollars with a thirty-two point six-five percent increase to the pickup rate. The second one is a lot simpler, and we can explain why we're asking that at the informational.
Yeah.
You guys.
I am thinking that we go with the simpler one, when I was reading them, that that made considerably more sense to me.
Darlene, do you have those both?
No, I don't.
Janet, can you send that to her?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you.
Janet, can you send them to my um, home email instead of the town email?
Uh, yeah, because I have that on record now, yep.
Okay.
So Jimmy, what do you think, the second one?
Yes, the simpler one.
Yes.
Uh, if that was to pass, how is that gonna affect the budget? Should that be voted on before the budget? I mean, because that could change it, because if it doesn't pass, we're gonna have a large increase in trash hauling, because Mike said it's gonna go up thirty-two percent.
The number in the budget is the larger number.
Okay.
If the article passes, then the budget would go down, otherwise it would stay the same.
Thank you.
Yep.
Denise, are you, are you good with the second version?
Yes.
Alright. And after that article, we should put in this, maybe put in the school article that the town, the Athens has to vote on. The judge has sent.
The school vote? I mean, the, the uh.
Allowing Westminster to.
Yeah, yes.
Union. Alright.
We're almost near the bottom of the warning.
The what?
So that will be near the bottom of the warning?
No, it'll be near the bottom of any of the town business, and then it, and then it will, that we'll have that, and then we'll have the special articles.
Okay.
So, the special articles will be HCRS. Uh, Women's Freedom Center. Uh.
Youth, youth services.
Youth services.
I can remove that from the list there, David, if you want.
Yeah, no, that's fine, SEFC, the senior center, um.
Hospice.
Hospice and.
And cares.
Grafting cares.
Senior Solutions.
And Senior Solutions. And then number nineteen. Which is last year's, it'll be different this year, the number, but number nineteen to, um, I think it should say to to authorize the select board to set the time of future town meeting.
It, it can't say to set it to future town meeting, it has to say to.
No, it can't say what it does now from last year, and why I, I said to to authorize the select board to set the time of future town meeting.
So you don't wanna be to select, just to set the date for the first Tuesday in March and put that date, that down?
No, I would just say the select board, um, so that if, I, I, hopefully COVID is done and over with, and we can have a regular town meeting next year, but we don't know. Um, and, uh, right now, it's not really a town meeting, it's an Oscar, so. Um. Even if we were granted the authority to do that, we can only have it on the first Tuesday in March or the three days big window in which to do it, um. So I would just think that would be simpler.
So you want, uh, will the town authorize the select board to set the town, uh, future town meeting?
Future town meeting.
Yeah.
And then to Ken's idea, as well, be, um, be eliminated. Are there any other articles that we need to put in that we're putting?
Darlene, after you get that warning all typed up, can you just send it to us, the three of us, so that we can take a quick look at it before it goes to print?
Yes, thank you. So we're still waiting to see, uh, from Lynn whether we can, uh, if we put those school articles in.
Well, we, yeah.
Right, right.
We definitely have to do the school article. But I think we have to vote on that same question. From within the email chain that I have seen. The town has to vote on it, and then the whole district has to vote on it, same timing thing. Um, but let's get Lynn to give us the, the actual answer on that, and
and.
And whether the budget goes in or not, or if it doesn't, something's that. Um. Warning, as we, we have worked on it tonight, and that we, uh, that we sign on uh, with any corrections we see, times, even if it's a little room, uh, to correct.
David, I'm so sorry, but I couldn't hear you, you were totally broken up, can you say that again for me?
Alright, I'm making a motion to, uh, approve the warning. Um. And if we have to edit, correct it, that we are able to do that, and that sign it on the twenty-fifth, which is the last day that we can. So Darlene will get us the draft out, we will go over it, we will look at it. We will approve it, if we see something that we need changed in it, we change it, but that we approve it and we sign it twenty-fifth.
That's fine.
Because there may be a bridge or something that we see that we learn to. Alright.
I'll second that.
I'm without a motion, is there a second?
Alright.
Alright. Uh, warrants, I will make a motion that, uh, some warrant.
I'll second that, and Darlene, I'll try to get in as soon as I can to get that signed.
Pardon, I didn't catch you.
I said, I'll get in as soon as I can to sign those.
Okay. Well, I have them here at home with me right now, so I gotta drop them off.
Don't rush, I can't get this. Oh, sorry, David, go ahead.
I was just gonna say you'll drop, have them there for.
Yeah, I can drop them off tomorrow.
Okay, um. Did, on that, I'll, I've approving the warrant, warrants.
You have a second on that motion?
I'll second. Yeah.
Alright.
Hi.
Hi.
Alright. Rhodes. Matt, still here?
Yep, I'm still here.
Alright. Um, so can you tell us about the, uh, the warranty information for the truck?
A little bit, uh, my mom knows more about it, so Janet, if you could speak up on this.
Yes, I was researching the information online about extended warranties for the age of our truck. And I found this company, I think it was Premium Two Thousand. And they will cover the truck up to a ten years old. I was researching the information, and I called Greg Allen to see if he's had any dealings with this company. And surprisingly, he's, that's the warranty that they have that they use.
Why didn't, why didn't he tell us this when our other warranty went, ran out before we spent all that money on?
He, from my, when I was talking to him, he was surprised that they do individual um, warranties for individuals and not through companies, you know, like through ATG. So that's that. And I had him, I, I you guys have all looked at what, uh, it entails?
I, yeah, looked over.
From the first warranty, which I believe Trey, the guy I was dealing with, with Trey, and that is the same guy that Craig Allen deals with. Um, the first cost for the first, and the second year on the first one was anything to the left of the after treatment. That's what it covers. And the last one, I think it was ninety-three hundred or something. That covers everything except for rental towing, roadside assistance. And I think that's in wearout parts. I'm assuming. So, and the nine, I think it's the nine thousand one. I believe he said it had no limit. So there was no limits of what it would cost, they would cover. I'm assuming with the eight, eighty-three hundred one was, it had limits on what it would cover. Um. I'm giving you the two-year cost of these premiums. Um. Can I answer anything else? On the, there is a approval thing that the, the truck has to go through, and Craig did say that that's a couple hundred dollars. Where they, the first page I gave you, there's a thing of what they go check. And then they plug it into the computer, and that reads out, and that's what they like too, so they like both things. And Craig did say that that's usually around a couple hundred dollars for that pre-approval. Um, check.
Okay.
I wish we would have had this warranty a year ago, but.
Well, I do too. But like I said, when we were discussing the budget, if you went for the nine thousand dollar one, that's for two years, and that could come out of the, um, repair maintenance that we have in the budget already for twelve-five.
So we could take it out this year and next year, correct?
Well, if you get the two-year one, it goes for two years.
Yes, so we could take half this year and half next year.
Well, there's two different. There's two different prices, there's one for option one, which is the first year, and then if you go with the two-year one, it's cheaper. But you, you're not going back next year and having them.
Reexamine.
Reappraise it.
David, are you asking, do we pay that price over two years, or do we have to pay it all at once?
I think we have to pay it all at once, but I think we can take it out, we can then.
They do have monthly payment. But you get a ten percent discount if you pay it all at once.
Yeah. I'm thinking that we should probably try for the two-year plan and have it, have it reviewed and see if the truck qualifies and, and go for that.
There was something else that Janet mentioned to me this afternoon about this that, um, I, I don't know Janet, about the, um, the warranty going with the truck, if it gets sold.
I had called Trey, well, Trey had called me, and I asked him, I said, if we get another used truck and we want to, can we transfer this to the used truck? And he said, no, but the, if we get the warranty, the warranty goes with our old truck, so it would make the value of the truck better, because it's already got a warranty on it.
So if we go with this two-year warranty, that would put us right at the schedule where we're thinking about trading it in possibly anyway?
Yeah. I mean, in the meantime, you can always be looking for a good used one. But you're covered if something major happens, that's my view of it.
Feeling on used trucks. They're just other people's headaches and.
Yes, but now we know we can get a policy that covers them.
We, yes, we do. Jimmy, what's your thought on the warranty?
Um. If this is just covering major stuff, I mean, like hydraulics, it doesn't cover stuff like that, is that correct?
Um, I'm not a mechanic, Jimmy, so I would say everything that's on that paper that I gave you guys is covered. Except for the rapid repair guarantee plus roadside assistance and rental truck assistance.
So are we wanting to pay all this in one year, or do we want to divide it out in two years?
Well, that was kind of my question, I think we would pay it all this year, but we might, might do half of it from this budget. And half of it from the next budget, although that's just making it more complicated, um.
When does it actually start? Is it as soon as we pay them and sign the paperwork? Or is it?
There's a thirty-day, uh, thirty-day period there that, uh, started when I started asking him about it. You know, it's like with any contract, the prices that he gave me were good for thirty days.
Okay.
Um. I don't know what else we need to know, but I haven't showed you or told you.
Yeah. I think because we don't need the unexpected repair like we had this year of seventeen thousand dollars. Um. Because if we keep it and we have another thing like that, it's, it's just not responsible or reasonable when we know we can do this for about four thousand, so.
Yeah, it breaks down to about forty-five, forty-six hundred dollars a year for the two years.
Yeah.
If we pay for the two-year upfront. And like I said, we did put twelve-five in repair budget for this, and I'm assuming that's where the nine thousand three hundred or whatever it is would come out if you chose that, um.
Plan.
Contract plan.
Yeah.
Question.
Well, I will make a mo. Go ahead.
I have a question, David, um, since you're discussing this warranty, does that mean that we're not going to have an article about buying a new truck at this time?
I don't believe we will, is that, that was my kind of feeling or understanding, that we weren't going to put an article in for a new truck.
Okay.
So not.
That was my understanding. I understood that you guys decided, um, we would wait till twenty-twenty-two when it was scheduled to happen anyway. We, the discussion, I believe, was we've put seventeen thou, well, we've put seventeen thousand into it, but we only have fifteen thousand, but since we've done so much work to it, we decided to hang on to it.
Yes. So I will make a motion that we go with the two-year plan and pay it upfront. Is there a second?
Are we taking all that money out of the repair and maintenance fund?
Yes. I think we can talk about it, we would take it out here, um, I'm thinking that we might next year's to pay for next year's, just on, on the books, as it looks, as it is. Uh, but that we would pay it all upfront this year.
So when we pay it all upfront this year, we would have to pay it next month?
Yes.
We don't have additional money coming in until September?
That's true.
Okay.
There's plenty of money in the town accounts.
Mm-hmm.
And when I'm saying that we pay for it this year, next year, it's more just an accounting, an accounting thing on the, on the, in our books that we would, that we would do it that way, but that we actually pay it all this year from that fund.
I don't see how that's going to work, because when you pay it, it takes it out automatically from the fund.
No, I understand that, but then next year we can, we may not be able to, but I, I say we do it this year and we pay it all upfront this year, that's the motion.
Yeah.
But next, next year on the repair maintenance, we just lower it by forty-five or forty-six hundred, that's the warranty would be.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Yeah. All right, is there a second?
And one more question, David, which plan are you looking at?
I think that, that, I don't have it right here in front of me, but, uh, the better plan there.
The nine, I think it was ninety-three hundred?
Yes.
Jimmy, you think the sec, the higher plan is the better one to go?
Um. Yeah, I think so, um. If we run into any problems with this, when you go, you get the computer done, and I mean, hopefully we're not going to run into any problems that we've got to fix before we can actually get this. But.
Now, even though we're, we're saying we're going to do this, if they put the truck on the computer and it doesn't pass what they're expecting it to be, then.
We've got to fix it before it can, it's got to pass before we can, you know, get it.
Okay.
And we can talk about that either the next meeting or at a special meeting if it's, if it's big money, and then we can decide then whether we continue with the, with the, uh, uh, warranty or if we don't.
Well, hopefully it passes and there's nothing wrong with it, and it's not going to cost us big money.
Well, I'm think.
They just had the truck down there. They put a lot of work into it, they put more work into it than I was expecting. So they better not, uh, find anything wrong. I will not be happy.
Well, none of us will be happy, but Matt, do you suspect that it will pass?
It should pass, I mean, it just went down, they just completely went through it, so it should be good to go.
Yeah. All right, is there a second on that, or do we not want to do it?
I second it.
All right. Any more discussion on it? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
You both, I heard Jimmy, did you vote?
I did.
Oh, okay. All right, so Matt, can you get that down there as soon as I can get in to start this process?
Yep, I will contact them tomorrow or Monday.
And who wants to sign that contract with them?
I will tell Trey to send it all down to the town office, all the information. If that's all right with everybody.
That's fine with me, um, do we need to make a motion just to have David sign it?
I will add that to my motion that, uh, that I will be able to sign, uh, the warranty if need be.
Okay.
Is that good with both of you?
Yep.
That's fine.
All right, Matt, anything else with Rhodes?
Oh, everything's, everything's holding together pretty well, uh, we've had to do, uh, two bearings in the back of the big truck. And we just had a small problem with the chain and the little sander, but other than that, everything's going good.
Okay. Who replaced the bearings, did you or?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Matt, you might want to discuss, uh, the salt?
Oh, yeah, since we switched to the new salt company, our salt consumption has dropped considerably.
Well, that's a good thing, because we do use a lot of salt.
I, depending on how many storms we have this year, it don't look like we'll use nearly as much as we did last year.
All right.
What is the reason for using less? I don't, I don't recall.
Well, it's better, it's better quality salt, it's bigger, it's, it looks kind of brownish, but they, it comes in, it stays dry, so it doesn't get rained on. So it's not kind of somewhat diluted, and it works ten times better.
Okay.
Because we're putting it on with the little truck instead of the big truck, like the last, uh, last little bit of snow we got, I think we used a quarter of a backhoe bucket for the whole entire town. The big storm we had, we used, I think the big storm and the little storm that we had, we only used maybe a bucket and a half, two buckets.
So by, by using the little truck, does it not spread it out as far and it doesn't go off the road and it stays on the road better, or what's?
The reason we use the little truck is the gate, the chain width is a lot narrower than the big truck.
Yeah.
It seems to actually use the little bit less salt that we put out, it doesn't make any difference in time in melting. So we're actually putting less on with the little truck, and it's working just as fast as when we were putting it on with the big truck.
Does that put extra wear and tear on the little truck using it for more standing?
Yep.
Okay.
But that one's got a scheduled, that one's already in the schedule to be replaced. You know what I mean?
Well, so is the other one, it's.
Yep, but it's half again one, half again the other.
Okay.
All right, anything else for?
Nope, that's all I can think of at this point.
All right. I don't have anything for executive session, does any, do either of the two of you?
Um, give me one second. I don't, I don't think so.
Jimmy?
I have a legal matter I want to discuss.
All right. I will make a motion that, uh, we enter into executive session to discuss it.
Can I ask a question real quick before we go? It's Krista.
Sure.
Um, when is the last day to submit your name to run for a position?
Twenty-fifth at five o'clock is my understanding.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, the twenty-fifth at five?
By five o'clock, yes.
Okay, and do we come to Darlene's house for that or the town office?
If you can't make it to the town office while I'm there, you can come to my house, I have the form for you to.
Thank you.
All right, uh, I will make a motion to go into executive session to.
Can I ask a question?
Who is this?
Sherry.
Sherry, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so, um, you guys went through all of the warrant items, but can we just get a rundown on where things stand with those consent forms for offices?
I don't know, Darlene would be the one to know that.
Okay, we've had quite a few of them and signed up, um, the only office that I have, that I haven't had anything on is, uh, the Campbell Fund and the Auditor.
And you have a name for the Select Board?
Yes, I do.
And can we be informed of that?
Yeah, Dennis. Dennis Maranti.
Okay. And my other question is, um, you're going into an executive session now, um, will you be making decisions in that executive session, and will there be a, an opportunity for public uh, to come back into this meeting afterwards?
If, if we do make any decisions, yes, the public would be notified, uh, would be able to come back in. Uh, I don't suspect that we're going to make any decisions, uh, there'll be any votes, uh, had after the, this, but if anybody wants to, um, exit and then come back and wait, they are certainly welcome to do that.
So how does, how does one do that in a virtual meeting? I mean, you're basically going to.
You exit the meeting is my, I, and Hannah, you can tell me better on this, but you exit the meeting and then you try and come back in the meeting, but you would not be let back in the meeting until the executive session is ended.
So, so in other, so in other words, it's a guessing game as to when to try and come back in the meeting?
You, you, you can exit and come back at any time, the host will have to let you in, so you can exit the meeting and then you'll be in a waiting room and.
Okay.
In.
Okay.
Is that, Hannah, are you there?
I think that, I think that should work, I have noticed that people, if they've already been in a meeting.
I think that, I think that should work. I have noticed that people, if they've already been in a meeting, sometimes they don't go into that waiting room situation if they leave and come back. I'm not sure why the software does that. Um, so I'm just, yeah, I'm warning you that it, people might automatically pop back in if they've already been in this meeting. I'm not 100% sure. I mean, alternatively, you could get emails from everybody who wants to join back and send out an email when you're done with executive session.
Or we could leave this meeting up as it is and go to a, uh, to a phone call perhaps with the select board.
You could, you could totally like jump on that other meeting link that I had up for the BOA meeting. That would still work if you guys wanted to, uh.
We, I would, you would just need to leave this meeting because you can't be in two meetings at once. Is that correct?
I think you can be in two meetings. You could just mute yourself in this one.
Okay.
I, that's what I was doing when both of the meetings were happening.
So David, it's up to you. What do you want to do?
Let's, uh, let's try and do a phone call. If we can't do that, we'll come back and we will go into, uh, we'll go into the border of abatement room. I will try and make the calls.
All right. I'll mute myself on here.
Okay.
We haven't finished the motion yet.
All right. The motion is, uh, to enter executive session to discuss a legal matter where premature public knowledge replaces a town at a substantial disadvantage. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. And so we're in executive session at, uh, nine, 10 minutes?
I got 8:52.
Executive session, no decisions were made. And there are, uh, no motions to be made at this point.
Did you have, uh, did you have, uh,
it's very.
Uh, 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 motion to go out of the executive session?
Yeah, a motion to come out of the executive session, yes.
No.
Who made the motion?
We did. But there's.
Okay.
And he seconded it. And it, third one minute before he came back here. Uh, any other business?
I have none.
If not. If not.
I'll second.
No decisions were made in executive session?
No.
No action taken?
Aye. Aye. All right. Motion is to adjourn. All of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. The meeting is adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.